Housing Authority Board of Directors meeting. Clerk Mas.
Thank you, Vice Chair Therese. Washington County is now meeting as the Housing Authority Board of Directors for this regular meeting, September 2nd, 2025. Director Roper?
Present.
Director Willey?
Here.
Director Fai?
Present.
Director Schneider?
Here.
Vice Chair Therese?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
Over to you, Vice Chair Therese.
Excuse me, Clerk Mas. Did I hear Director Roper is online?
Yes.
Great. Welcome, Director Roper. At this point, I'd like to ask if we have anyone signed up for public communication.
We had no one sign up in the room, Madam Vice Chair. Was there any member of the auditorium that would probably comment on any related housing authority item that you've seen or heard or want to be a part of? Not seen, will raise their hand, come forward. Is there any member online that wishes for public comment to the Housing Authority for up to two minutes at this moment? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. I'd like to move to the consent agenda, but before we do, I want to make sure that Director Roper has the opportunity to understand that I propose moving Consent Agenda Item Number Three to approve the Design Build Contract Award for Transitional Housing and Executive Director Signature Authority to the Action Item List. So, Director Roper, I want to make sure that you understand that you're comfortable with it as we look for a motion to accept the Consent Agenda.
Yes, I understand.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Sorry, having some video issues. I will get online here in a second.
She's going to try to get online here.
So, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda with the three remaining items.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
I did hear an aye from Director Roper, so that is a six to zero vote. Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation on Camp Rosenbaum. So, may we have that presentation?
Good morning, Chair and Directors. For the record, I'm Molly Rogers. I'm the Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County.
Could you please pull your microphone a little closer?
Yes, thank you. I am very ecstatic today to share with you a very special opportunity that we provide the kids who live in Housing Authority properties or as a participant of our Housing Choice voucher program. It's called Camp Rosenbaum, and it's named after its founder, Brigadier General Fred Rosenbaum. It's located at Camp Reilia at the coast. So, while camp may seem like a rite of passage for really many of our childhoods, overnight camp can really be elusive for kids who can't afford it. And so, one of the benefits we're able to provide as a housing authority is we get to send up to 30 kids from Washington County to go to camp at the coast for free. And this is really all because we did have staff who volunteered for the week. Bonnie Jo Barnaby, who's in the audience, and Erin Babby. So, special thank you to our staff who volunteered. And it's really not lost on me that school just started last week and this week. And for many of our kids, they get to talk about their summer and reflect on it. And our kids get to say they went to camp and they made new friends. So, today, I'm joined by our Community Engagement Program Coordinator, Bianette Valdez, who coordinated our engagement and had the very important task of recruiting our kids this year. And we also online, I hope, we, oh, there we, we have Carolina Gomez, AKA Salsa, I believe is her camp name. She's also on the Board of Directors for Camp Rosenbaum, been a longtime volunteer and a former colleague of mine. Thank you, Carolina or Salsa. She's going to share with us a little bit of her camp experiences. So, now, I'd like to turn it over to Bianette.
Great. Thank you, Molly, for that introduction, and thank you to the Directors of the Board for your time today. I have the honor of sharing about Camp Rosenbaum, a really beloved opportunity we provide for our Housing Authority families. I'm going to use this. There we go. Great. So, just a little bit about what is Camp Rosenbaum. So, it is a week-long overnight camp for children who live in subsidized housing that's available to nine through 11-year-olds. Camp Rosenbaum partners with housing authorities in Oregon and southwest Washington. It also partners with Oregon National Guard and the Portland Police Bureau. It's a really volunteer-support-heavy initiative, so additional volunteers join from other housing authorities, law enforcement agencies, and fire bureaus. So, Camp Rosenbaum, throughout the week of camp, they are instilling core values within the camp. It's modeled within that week, working together, being fair, sharing, caring, being loyal. And lastly, that good citizens are everywhere, meaning they're all around our community, and they're there to support children when they go back to their community. Okay. Okay, so, a little bit about the history of what is camp. So, as Molly said, camp was inspired by Brigadier General Fred M. Rosenbaum. He was a general for the Oregon National Guard. He was the Chairman of the Housing Authority of Portland. He was an established businessman in the Portland community. So, with his experiences, he instilled campers the importance of staying in school. He often told them, "You can go as high as you want to go." So, a lot of this passion stemmed from his childhood. He survived the Holocaust in Austria, fleeing to England as a child. He was there as a foster child for two years before he was reunited with his parents, and then together, they moved to the U.S. in 1941. He realized that many children, especially those living in low-income housing, would benefit from a camp like Camp Rosenbaum. So, his vision came to fruition. That has been going on for over 50 years. So, some highlights from this past camp year. We had over 208 volunteers who supported camp this year. We have folks all the way from the kitchen to being a camp counselor and all in between. Volunteers joined from housing authorities all across the region, law enforcement agencies, and fire bureaus. We had three Washington County staff join us this year, and they spent a whole week outside of their work schedule to be present and engage with so many campers, which we were really thankful for. Nine housing authorities participated this year. And as far as campers, we had 27 Washington County youth attended. They are campers. They live in housing supported by Section Eight Public Housing, Special Purpose Vouchers, Product Base, and Local Rent Assistance. I really want to note something special about this year. I was able to help with the bus, getting the kids into the bus and out. And we had a couple of parents of the kids who actually went to Camp Rosenbaum way back then. So, it was really just fun seeing some of the parents reminisce with each other and share about their experiences and things that they were exciting. Like, one of them had never ridden a horse, and they got to do that while they were there. So, it was really sweet getting to witness this camp that's been around for such a long time that their children were now able to benefit from. So, that was really sweet to be a part of that. Some photos. So, there's some fun photos here. We have Molly here chatting it up with some campers at the music room. They were preparing for their talent show, which I heard was really popular this year. And so, that was really fun to witness some of that. This is from the open house, which is an open house that's open during the week of camp, and it invites all of the staff from housing authority agencies and folks who support volunteers. There's also Bonnie Jo there with crafts, also very popular activity. Horse riding is also very popular. And then, also, the Fire Dog Challenge, which is where all of the campers get dressed in full firefighter gear, and they get to experience a real simulation for emergency, which is really cool to kind of see the sirens and everybody participating in that. So, really fun to get to see some of the stuff that they do during camp. So, as mentioned previously, we had a few volunteers join us. Here's Bonnie Jo and Erin, our two Washington County staff. Bonnie Jo works in finance, and Erin works in our business operations branch. So, we're really excited that they were able to participate. And as you heard, Molly, they do get camp names when they go there. They're either given to them or they choose themselves. And so, Bonnie Jo's Grantee and Erin is Scully. So, interchangeably, we use those names. But I wanted to share some of the quotes from their experience. From Grantee, "It was such a wonderful experience to help the next generation of children, to encourage them to be their best selves, good citizens, and to tell them that they can be anything they want to be in life." From Scully, "The Camp Rosenbaum experience is truly unique. It was a personal and professional honor to participate. As a housing services employee, I was moved to see so much sincere care for creating positive and engaging experiences for the children of our communities." So, I just wanted to shout out them who were able to participate a whole week outside of their regular work schedule to volunteer and give their time. And now, I'm going to pass it over to Carolina, who will share a little bit about her experience.
Thank you. Could you please give access to Crystal Crawler, that she's in the call, and will also like to give some speech of camp? She's the Director of Camp. My name is Carolina Gomez. I am a board member for Camp Rosenbaum. My camp name is Salsa. I also work at Home Forward, Portland Housing Authority. I've been with the agency for 17 years, but at camp over 10, and serving in the war for seven years. Camp has been a wonderful experience, personally and professionally. It is a great opportunity. There is not much I will be able to share with you today. You have to go to camp to be able to experience what I'm trying to say, but it's a really great opportunity to be able to be with the kids. Since you come to camp, since the first time that you are coming to camp as a volunteer, it is a great experience, not only for the campers, but for all volunteers. There is a lot of things that we take with us home. It helps us with leadership skills. You get to see and love the activities and every single kid that goes to camp. There is a lot of things that camp has been doing. There is a lot of things that we are working on improvement. Listen to the words of, there has been surveys to campers and their parents and also to staff. And camp, it's a family for everyone that goes there. It is a long-term tradition of serving. Most of, we have volunteers that have served over 35 years, and many people that, since you are, since you come, you are like it or just decide to do other things. But it's a great opportunity to serve, and you can work with the kids in council, as a counselor, where you'll get to be with them all the time and doing activities. And there's also a lot of other activities, like camp supply, arts and crafts, and all the other things that they already show. Crystal, is there something else that you would like to add?
Hi, I'm Crystal. I'm the Program Director for Camp Rosenbaum. I'm the only full-time employee for the nonprofit, and then, we have a part-time employee who helps with fundraising. So, all of our programs are put on by volunteers like Carolina and Bianette, who help recruit the campers. It's a big undertaking for a lot of volunteers, and we do it all because we want to give the kids one week of an amazing camp experience and also let them know that the community is behind them and letting them know that they can do anything and be anything they want with hard work and education. So, we truly appreciate all the support from Washington County Housing Authority and Home Forward as our biggest housing authority supporters.
Thanks, Crystal. Thanks, Carolina. Well, thank you for sharing, and thank you for listening and hearing a little bit more about this amazing program. Yeah, thank you so much for your time, and if you have any questions or comments, we welcome them now.
Thank you very much. It's so uplifting to see these pictures. And before we get into comments, I also want to thank you for protecting the identity of your campers by not having their pictures here. So, I think that's important. Any comments? Thank you. Commissioner Schneider just pointed out that Chair Harrington has her hand up. So, go ahead, Chair.
Thank you very much. Having been raised in a family where I had the opportunity to attend camp in many summers, I really appreciate the efforts that you all have made to help create these memories, but also to help mold our future generations. The question I have is, well, two questions. If someone wishes to support the work of the nonprofit, what, how could they connect with the nonprofit to do so? And it also relates to the second question of if someone is interested in volunteering their time to be a volunteer staff member, how would they go about connecting with the nonprofit and following through on that?
Thank you so much for your question. Since I'm the full-time employee, if anyone would like to volunteer, I keep a list of anyone who's new, who would like to apply for next year, so they're able to reach out to me. I'm sure Molly Rogers or Bianette can provide my email address for everyone after the meeting. And if anyone wants to support Camp Rosenbaum, either with volunteer hours or financially, they can either email me or go to our website. It's camprosenbaum.org, and there's a donate button. We are operating on 100% donations. We don't have any full-time corporate sponsors, so it's all our events that we do to fundraise to give these kids an amazing week. Thank you.
There is also a couple of fundraising activities that you, that you can come and participate. The kids will not, or their families will not pay a penny to go to camp, but they will receive everything that they will need through the camp experience, even some special accommodations that any kid may have or camper may have through their stay. We will try to accommodate all the things that they need. So, there is a lot of need. In there, there is the volunteer opportunity, the financial opportunity coming to the fundraising. But if you also have ideas or know of other nonprofit organizations that can donate shoes, socks, underwear, anything that we will be able to use at camp, we accept those donations.
So, we will make sure your board gets information on how to participate and support more. Camp Rosenbaum is a 501(c)(3), and staff, if they want to participate as a volunteer, they can obviously come to me and Bianette, and we will figure out that enragement directly.
Thank you. Are there other board comments? Commissioner Schneider?
I'll just say that I was not aware of this program until joining the Housing Authority Board of Directors and the County Commission, and you've just put a big smile on my face today. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Commissioner Fai.
Yeah, this is really exciting. I just came on the board to, on the mic to just say, congratulations. This is a great work and great endeavor to be part of. You are making a difference in these kids' lives and facilitating this opportunity. I do have one question. You're not going to get off that easily. You didn't come here for kudos, right? Feedback. I noticed that in your remarks, Molly, you said that up to 30 Washington County kids, up to 30, you said. And I noticed that you pointed out 27 Washington County's kids were able to participate in this. What happened there? Why not 30? I know that those kids exist, and we have many more. I wish there could be more, but yeah, tell us more about why there was 30 versus 27 that got enrolled this year.
I appreciate you lifting that up. Part of, I think, part of the intent also of elevating this with you all is make sure that there is a correlation between the number of volunteers we have that we can provide with the number of kids we can send. So, I think Crystal can kind of, you know, can eliminate, they're having to generate a lot of volunteers, and it's a lot of management, but if we can, we can, it's hard to ask someone to give up a whole week. So, we want to, if we can, even include even more than 30 someday, that would be welcome. It's about 146 total. So, that's actually a pretty good, pretty good number, you know, 30 from one housing authority. And obviously, Home Forward is a much bigger housing authority, and they send the most number of kids. But Bianette, do you have any specifics around the differential of the three?
Yeah, and sometimes, there may be cases where they're not able to attend, just like last-minute dropouts and getting people in from the waiting list. And so, there's a lot of coordination that happens really quickly in such a short amount of time. So, I would say that also impacts getting folks on time and making sure that they get into the bus drop-off and getting there. So, it's a lot of coordination. But to Molly's point, I feel like being a volunteer is a big commitment, especially if you're a staff person within housing services and you're giving up a whole week of, like, on top of already your work. So, I would say that volunteer recruitment is something that I think is always a struggle for us. And so, I think if we're able to mitigate that in the future, I think that's something that we want to definitely continue focusing on.
I believe that Crystal has a comment as well.
Yes, I was just going to echo what Bianette said, is that a lot of times, we get last-minute cancellations, and we did do a really good job up until like two days before camp, getting the standby campers in those places where we knew where campers were not going to be able to attend. But there are some campers who just don't show up the day of. So, even though we're trying to contact the families, we did have a better success rate this year of the attrition rate. So, us meeting with the Housing Authority employees and the reps every month really did help with the communication with the families and making sure everyone was ready to go when it came time.
Thank you for, all of you for taking a stab at that question and answering that. You know, for a bit of a storytelling, the success of this program, I think what will be great next time you come, or if this, I'm sure this information exists out there, so it shouldn't hopefully be too much. But if you could share the board, so we could tell that success story of the different housing, the low-income housing, the Section Eight housings that these kids are pulled from the years, I think that will be a really good story to tell and to show the map of which, which housing, you know, which areas in Washington County we're pulling kids, and how do we make sure that equal access to this opportunity exists? And how do we, as a board, lean in on you all as the subject matter experts to say, perhaps we've been focused on this, you know, let's focus on this area this time? Because sometimes, equal doesn't mean equitable, and I don't know how we could give you an informed feedback on that level. And I think for me, as somebody that sits here as an individually elected, I think that's where my interest lies, to see that, the diversification and the map and the jurisdiction that the kids represent throughout Washington County.
Excellent point. Thank you. Commissioner Willey?
Yeah, just, I just really want to emphasize the fact that this, this event's been going on for 50 years, so just consider the number of kids that you've impacted their lives. It would probably be good if we know of any of them that are still around in the area or functioning in the, participating maybe, a little testimony on the impact it has, because I know that, I went to camp. I can still remember lots of stuff going on to different varieties of camps, and kids need to have that experience in their summer vacation. And I, you know, I think the history would tell us that that'll be the one thing they remember 20 years from now, about how influential, how important, how much fun it was to them. So, good job on this. This is very important.
Finally, I'd like to say thank you again, and I would just like to extend a thought that perhaps with your camp names like Salsa, you need a surname like Angels. So, and all of your volunteers do. So, thank you so much for the time, the energy, and the care that you extend to these kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Crystal. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, with that, we are going to move on to action items. I would like to ask that the first action item be the item three that was removed from the Consent Agenda and put into Action Item. And I believe Ms. Chen is going to give us a quick overview on that item. Thank you. And welcome, Ms. Rogers.
Good morning again, Directors. My name is Molly Rogers, Executive Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. With me today is Deputy Director Chen, who is here to request formally to action of approval of a Design Build Contract for our transitional housing project.
Thank you, Molly. Good morning, Directors, and thank you for this opportunity to present in front of you. For the record, I'm Jill Chen and Deputy Director. Before you is the request to approve Design Build Contract for Transitional Housing and Executive Director Signature Approval. As a couple of, I think, items for background, just want to make sure we sort of recall how this process came about. Back in March, the Housing Authority asked your board for approval for the acquisition of this property at the request of our partner, Central City Concern, who is still our partner and consultant in the design-build process. That design-build request came to your board in May, where we had a public hearing and an approval for this design-build process, which was also approved. And we put out the RFP in June. This is the formal request for the process through which we have come to select the contractor and the architect. The scope of the contract is about 5.7 million. It includes common area upgrades to accommodate for the transitional housing program. This is kitchens, community space, clinical office space, and a number of additional ADA units and accessibility, as well as level of comfort in the interior, such as a replacement of HVAC, carpet, instead of the carpeted floors, having hard floors, more durable floors, as well as some of the exterior signage and fencing. And part of this request for approval is because many of this, as we go into design-build, is making sure that the scoping of the work meets the needs of the people we're trying to serve. And there's also a long lead time in ordering some of the materials, in particular, things like flooring. And lastly, but not least, is a permitting process. We know that as we put in kitchenettes or kitchens, laundry rooms, those will require permitting, and we want to be able to work with our colleagues in LUT to make sure that we've got everything right. The selection process was done through procurement with procurement support and advice, and we had a total of six applicants, all of whom were well-versed in the design-bid process. And two were selected to come in for interviews with a panel of both internal and external experts. The top scorer was the one that is being proposed, which is Walsh Construction and MWA Architects. And last but not least, once this particular contract for design-build is awarded, we will be coming back and engaging the board, your board, for community concerns, engagement, and further discussion, including the selection of the operator, which is currently, right now, in an RFP process as well.
Are there any questions?
I have one question, and I think this might be a bit of a terminology, but I was reflecting back, back when we were doing another transitional housing similar to this project now called the Hardwood Commons. Is this transitional housing in the true sense of a transitional housing, or how do you define transitional housing? Or will this be a permanent housing, just like Hardwood Commons?
This is not like Hardwood Commons in that, Hardwood Commons is permanent supportive housing. Residents have leases in their name, and they can live independently as long as they so choose. So, but this is transitional housing, so that is a different model. So, but this is transitional housing, so that is a different model where we don't have necessarily lease agreements, we have program agreements. We can provide a deeper and longer presentation on what transitional housing in the model is. I think maybe the right time would be after we've selected the, the operator and the program, and programming team and what that all means. And that would be a great, great time for us to dive deeper in what that model actually is. But it is time limited.
Thank you. And Chair Harrington, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate what Molly just shared. I think part of what I see the community struggling with is not really having a good view of the, the overall process. They don't really have visibility into what the overall process is for our acquiring a property, going through the appropriate property improvements and the program proposal and some other significant phases before a facility of some type is operational. We had the same sort of process needed for our putting together the, the various locations, the two locations for the CAT as well. So when you come back to us, I think it would be really helpful for there to be an, just an overall sort of phase diagram for our community to understand that, no, they haven't missed anything because all that I've had the opportunity to see about this project is that, that part of community engagement in terms of how a facility will be utilized is still coming before us. We're not there yet. And I want to make sure that I have the context right, that our community has had the opportunity of the context and that we're able to point to something that says, here's, here's when it will be coming, here's how it will be coming. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes, and we, that makes absolute sense and we need to be able to communicate. There's a lot of swim lanes happening, a lot of parallel tracking of the, how a whole project comes together. There's the renovation piece, that's the work that Jill's team's doing, but then there's the, how do we actually think about the people we're serving, the programming, the staff, the clinical care, and that's more on our, our housing services side. But these two need, do converge and they do come with milestones that do kind of come together. So we will put together a, a presentation that lays out the full project timeline.
That, I think, will be very helpful because we, board members, have had the opportunity now with multiple facility types of, from public safety and justice, behavioral health, to your various types of housing, to understand what the overall model is. But our community doesn't necessarily engage in a consistent manner like we do. So it's incumbent upon us to tell that story better. So thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Snyder.
Yeah, just a comment in, in general, though I'm going to use this opportunity because I think it's a, a good one to just highlight the importance of community engagement as your, as, as an entity, as you're working through your processes. I would be erring on the side of early and often and be trying to learn as we can through the process. So that, that kind of dovetails on, I think, what Chair Harrington was just speaking about and also even part of why this agenda item may have been moved to action for a presentation and discussion. Just, that would be my, my suggested bias for you would be community engage, engagement early and often.
Thank you, Commissioner Snyder. And I want to thank you for your flexibility in providing us this update and your comfort with moving to this agenda. And I just saw that Chair Harrington's hand went back up. Director Harrington, thank you.
Director Roper has raised her hand a couple of times.
I'm sorry, Director Roper. Please go ahead.
That's okay. I just had a quick question. For the hundred and seventy-two units, the residents are still residing there, is that correct while this is undergoing?
That would be the WoodSpring project, which is the next one on the agenda.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Director Roper.
Well, thank you again. And as we move forward after we take action here, you might want to stay. So if there are questions about the next, the next action items, you're available. So with that, is there a motion? And I'm looking for a motion to approve the design build contract award for the transitional housing and executive director's signature authority.
Director Roper made the motion.
Thank you, Director Roper. Is there a second?
Second.
Director Harrington, second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Thank you very much. And we will move on to our next action item. And that is to approve and the resolution and order authorizing the issuance of the Housing Authority of Washington County Revenue Bond 2025, the Woods, this is the WoodSpring Apartments project in a maximum principal amount of forty-eight million dollars to fund a loan to the Hawk WoodSpring Limited Partnership, providing for the determination of terms and covenants of the bond, authorizing execution and delivery of related documents and determining related matters. I'm going to ask for a motion and a second and we'll have discussion.
I move to approve as you read.
A second.
Thank you for the motion, Director Snyder, and for the second, Director Roper. Are there questions?
Is there going to be a staff report?
I don't, was there, was there a planned staff report because it didn't show here that that was the case?
Directors, there should be a presentation.
Oh, excuse me. Please.
Kevin?
I didn't see a presentation in the agenda.
Yeah, the presentation, directors, is for the next item, related to WoodSpring.
Okay. So we've got, so for action item number one.
That was on the consent. Was that consent?
I think they were planning on showing the presentation for both of these items and then us taking
Perfect.
The two different actions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington.
Would you prefer to move ahead with your presentation? We will hold the motion and the second on the first item and then come back to the second item. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Makes sense. Thank you. As you recall, the Washington County Housing Authority purchased, Housing Authority of Washington County purchased WoodSpring Apartments in July 2023 to preserve its affordability. We have been working on resyndicating and renovating the property really ever since then. So actually, today I'm joined by Deputy Director Chen and our Real Estate Division Manager, Lisa Varin, who will go through the specifics. Next slide, please. Thank you. Great. Well, we'll quickly go over a little bit of a project update, just as way of background. As you recall, WoodSpring Apartments is a hundred and seventy-two units, just like Director Roper was recalling very well. And it's mostly serving seniors living in Tigard. It was built in nineteen ninety-one using low income housing tax credits. And in December 2020, its affordability was expiring and that's when you all and the Housing Authority of Washington County swooped in and purchased the property to ensure its affordability for a long time to come. But the building in itself, many, many buildings, many buildings, many units needing renovation. And that's what we're here today, is to talk to you about that timeline and requested more actions. All right, back to you.
Thank you. For the record again, I'm Jill Chen, Deputy Director of the Housing Authority of Washington County. A quick project overview, as Molly mentioned, this is a hundred and seventy-two units in Tigard. It's, we came to this building because at the request of the community and the residents because they were at, at risk of being displaced. And we purchased it in July 2023, knowing that the building as we purchased have never had a major rehab and that it needed significant upgrades we have just to maintain its integrity. The current scope and scale is that we are looking at a project start on the construction in the fall of 2025 for ninety million. The Housing Authority will be transferring the ownership to a new limited partnership under a tax credit or partnership organization. With the intent that it will, Hawk itself will issue the forty-eight million in bonds, which is one of the agenda items for approval today, and that the agency itself will also put in additional funding to complete the financial, financing. The total project itself will be completed in early 2027, which is about an eighteen month process. The project scope had been done in, with a focus on making sure that we minimize the impact on the current residents. The units are currently occupied and we are looking at improving the integrity of the building with replacing the sightings, roof gutters. You can see the list, it's quite extensive with balconies, railings, also improving accessibility, having upgrades and site improvements. There will also be some selective interior, as well as some of the, all of the interior will be improved. That will include countertops. And given the weather we're planning, we will have air conditioning in every unit, as well as selective upgrades in terms of flooring, tub surrounds. The project team consists of Housing Authority as the sponsor and general partner. We are also working with Bronner, who worked with us on the Affordable Housing Resyndication of our six hundred plus units. That's Bronner, that's in AHP Phase One and Phase Two. We're also working with DDV, our relocation consultants. They also worked with us in AHP Phase Two. The last is a new design builder, which is Walsh Construction and MWA. This was done through a competitive process in which we had a number of applicants. And Walsh is also the one that we previously spoke about for Cornell Road. The project financing team was also selected through a competitive process. The process involved national and locally well-established and known entities. For the investor, we had RBC, who is able to bring in Fannie Mae as our upper tier investor. For the lender, the pool included Chase, Wells Fargo, Umpqua, and Banner. Banner Bank is the bank who came in with the Housing Authority in the initial acquisition with twenty million plus in, in bridge financing. And OHCS, we are also going, able to assume a number of the financings that had already been put into the original acquisition. This is with Oregon Housing and Community Services with their General Housing Account Program lending. That will be assumed by the new partnership. Housing Authority will put in some home funds, as well as our Section 18 proceeds, as well as assume the existing financing. Without further ado, I will pass it over to my colleague, Lisa Varin.
Good morning. Renovation is designed to minimize the impact to residents and will require temporary relocation of approximately thirty-two households, which is less than twenty percent of the residents in the hundred and seventy-two units. We are working with DDV Consulting to oversee the relocation process, which is the, which is a group that also came in and helped us with the AHP portfolio. DDV has administered resident relocation on forty-five plus projects over the last year, five years, and they've been meeting with residents over the past six months individually and have held three different relocation meetings at the property. And their, their budget and the budget of the relocation is approximately one point two million. Okay. So this is the sources and uses for this project. This is a ninety million dollar acquisition and rehabilitation project. And as you can see, it is a great example of layered financing. We, we have, RBC is bringing in tax credit equity, Banner Bank is bringing in the tax exempt loan. And together, they comprise over half, over half of the funding in the project. And if you go down, you'll see OHCS has a GAAP loan of about twenty-five million. So the three together comprise three quarters of the funding in the project. The Housing Authority has approximately twelve million dollars in this deal combined for both our acquisition and renovation loan. And we were also able to secure a home loan. And while not on this page, we also secured project based vouchers for the lowest income residents at the property. The uses are acquisition and construction. We have at, acquisition at forty-nine point four million, construction at twenty-four point two million, soft costs and financing at eleven million and a developer fee, which will come back to Hawk, at four point two million dollars. We are also required to have reserves on this project and so we will capitalize just under a million dollars in reserves. So where are we in the process? We completed our home application. We've completed our pre-development period. We're actually ready to issue permits, which is super exciting, a few weeks early ahead of our financial closing. And now we're at the point in time when we have the omnibus and bond resolutions, financial closing and construction start. So we're finalizing all of our loan agreements, promissory notes, regulatory agreements with all the various layered financing providers. And at the end of the month, we're looking to close construction, close all of the construction financing and begin construction in the beginning of October. So the omnibus resolution involves admitting the tax credit, credit investor as a limited partner, authorizing conveyance of the property from Hawk to the partnership, assigning the previous GAAP loan to the partnership, so bringing it into the construction phase, redeeming the bond, and authorizes the Hawk team to close and approve all of the transaction documents. Hawk will be issuing approximately forty-eight million in revenue bonds for the renovation.
Real quick, could you tell me what GAAP is? G-H-A-P?
Yeah, that is a, a program at the state level that provides loans to projects. I don't know if you want to offer?
Sure. That is the state program under Oregon Housing and Community Services. It's the General Housing Account Program. It is one of their multitude of different funding systems that they can use.
All right, thank you. Yeah, when you first said GAAP, I was thinking, okay, I get it. There's, we have GAAP funding in there, which is a private sector conversation, but then it's not spelled G-H-A-P. So anyway, thank you for that.
Yes, the acronym for that loan program. We have too many acronyms in affordable housing. We joke around about that. Okay. So the bond resolution that's before you today authorizes issuance of tax exempt bonds up to forty-eight million dollars, authorize, authorizes security for those bonds, approves sale of the bonds and application of proceeds, and authorizes approval of bond-related transaction documents. And our requested And our requested board actions are HABOT approval of the omnibus resolution and order, and the revenue bond resolution and order, which are two separate agenda items. If you have any questions, we're available to answer them.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Go ahead.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Director Roper.
Back when Director Willey was asking a question, that third page from the end, where you had the limited partnership, can you explain what limited partners, actually, what that entails?
Sure.
The first one, you just passed it. Sorry. One back.
The limited partnership is a, a structure for owning the property, and the Housing Authority will be the general partner. The limited partnership structure allows the tax credit investor, in this case, RBC, through funding from Fannie Mae, to come in and support our program, our project. This is an investment. They are going to be in the deal for 15 years. And we, as the general partner, is the obligated to essentially manage and operate the project consistent with our limited partnership agreement. So under that whole setup, HAWK is responsible for the day-in, day-out management, and the limited partner are our investors.
I'm just going to add that in order to accept the tax credit investment, we have to create a separate business entity, which is a limited partnership through the state of Oregon. So we create that limited partnership early on, but it has no other partners other than HAWK. But once we get to construction loan closing, we invite in the investor, RBC, to be part of that business, which is, which is investing the tax credits. So it is a subsidiary of HAWK, but the investor then becomes a major owner of the property at that moment.
Thank you. And that's just for 15 years, you said, right?
Correct.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Do you expand on what happens after the 15 years?
Sure. The tax credit investor will leave the partnership, and Housing Authority will be responsible for the ownership and management and continuing to own and operate. Under all these regulatory, under all the documents we will be signing, the Housing Authority will be required to keep the project affordable for 60 years. And that is a length of time that ensures the residents will be secure in an affordable housing project, but also that we will have sufficient affordable housing in our Washington County.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder.
I think I recall, so you indicated in the presentation that there's about 32 families that will be needing to be relocated, correct? I feel like I recall from prior materials in the last couple of weeks that there were some families that no longer meet the income guidelines, maybe 10, if my memory serves right. Does that 32 include the 10, or is that, is it 10 plus the 32?
I believe that is separate.
So that there are 32 over-income households at the property. There are 10 that are presently going through relocation, the actual relocation. There will be more forthcoming.
Okay. So there's a total of 32 that don't, is it the same 32?
The 32 that is being relocated is being relocated within the building, so they will qualify. The 10 that is over income will be required to move. And we are providing them relocation assistance in conformity with federal uniform relocation requirements.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Thank you for your presentation. I feel like the last piece of the conversation about the ownership, a light bulb went up in my head, so thank you for that wonderful explanation. And I think it's a great thing that we can clip for our community to explain, because it is a bit complicated. And I appreciate Director Roper for asking that question. I, I think what I want to follow up is the last question about the 32, and then the 10 that's over the income. Like how, what assistance, two-part questions. What assistance are we providing? Because those are 10 households that were already occupied, living there, who are seniors. They are over the income. Now they have to find somewhere else. What assistance is the consultant that we're paying for is providing to make sure that these 10 individuals actually get housed? Because I assume the consultant is still responsible for relocating those individuals, no matter what their income are.
That is correct. We are providing relocation assistance, I believe it's 9,700-plus dollars per household. These are over income. In our building, we have certain units that are up to 80% area median income. So in a family of four, maybe not four seniors, but for family of four, that would be over, I believe it's about 85,000. So it's, it's, it's those that are over our affordable, you can call it what is required under federal regulations. And they will be looking for housing in their community. We have, I think it's really market rate, because anything over 80% are generally not regulated.
To your point around the type of services they get with DDV, they, they're a full sale, they're doing the full housing navigation. They're going out looking for other apartments that would be in their price range, in their community they want to live in. They're doing first, first month's rent, last month's rent, security deposits. They're, they're doing the, the financial work they need to do to get into new housing, and helping with the day-to-day handholding of what they need to do to navigate through this housing market.
And, and they are being provided moving assistance, including, you know, moving, packing, lodging, per diems.
Thank you. I have no doubt you guys are really methodical and very compassionate about how you approach this project. It's been a long project, and I've just been really impressed to watch you all do your job in, in a compassionate way from the start when this project, when this situation started and how you navigated to keep people housed. The part two I have for that question is my own edification, and I want to ask the question and remind me, I think I'm sure we've covered it, this has been a long journey. Remind me that will people that are going to be relocated, will they have the opportunity once the construction is done to move back in?
Yeah, so I can answer that question. So the 10 households that are being relocated due to being over income will not have the opportunity to move back in. And in fact, I do want to add that several of those households are going to be first-time home buyers and purchasing homes, so that's an added benefit. I don't have the exact number, but we can share that with you once we've gotten a little further along in the project. For the 32 households, we've identified that we can actually do the work while they're in the, the, the property. And the amount of work depends on the unit. So, but we're hoping to minimize that to a couple of weeks to a month at the most, but it just depends on each of the units.
So yes, they'll go back to their?
But they will go back to their original unit. And we are doing a fair amount of work on a, on a day-to-day basis. We've worked with our contractor to come up with a plan that, because there are a lot of seniors in the property, that allows us to go in a day at a time and do the work we need to do, set up some opportunities for the seniors to hang out at the clubhouse or other places, and they can continue to live in their unit while we do the work. So that's why out of 172 units that are being addressed, you're only seeing 32 that are going to require relocation, is because the design build team has worked really hard to figure out a way to allow people to stay in their units while the work's being done.
And I should mention the 32 is really temporary relocation, with the goal that they will be hotelled in an empty unit in the same site. So they'll still be with their community and not be, you can call it displaced, while their unit is being upgraded.
Thank you. I think that's my, all the questions that I have for you all, just something to come back that I would love to hear as an individual here is, you know, what, these are senior residents, and I'd love to hear maybe in a memo or some email format, or maybe next time you're presenting this project topic in front of us is, what are you doing to minimize disruptions, you know, and noise, not cause any health issues, things like that? Like I, I would like to know some of the steps you're taking to minimize the disruption that could come from construction that is necessary, that we need to go through, and we're making sure people are, continue to be housed in their familiar house while this is happening as well. So not that we need to stop, I think everybody knows, but I, I'm just a bit more curious to know, how do we minimize and some of that? Because I, I find it very, I'm just trying to put, not walk a mile in their shoes, but do a bit of a perspective take in here and try to figure out if I was one of those residents, you know, would the paint bother me, would the noise bother me, you know, and how do I, like, who's protecting me from that?
Thank you. Commissioner Willey? Director Willey, excuse me?
Good presentation. Thank you.
Well, I, I want to say thank you as well, and I want to quickly say, we've come a long way. We have been in this room with signs about saving Wood Springs, and you have done a remarkable job to get us to this point for the people that are there and for the launching of those that are moving on to other opportunities. So thank you so much for this. What is on the table right now is that we have a motion from Director Snyder, a second from Director Roper regarding the first action, which is to approve the resolution and order authorizing the issuance of the Housing Authority of Washington County Revenue Bond. So let's take a vote on that. All those in favor? All right, we have a unanimous vote on action number one. Action number two is to approve the resolution and order authorizing actions by the Housing Authority of Washington County in connection with the Wood Springs Apartment Renovation Project, including transfer of property to the HAWK Wood Springs Limited Partnership, financing matters, including loans and capital contributions, and execution and delivery of related documents. Do I have a motion to accept that?
A motion.
We have a motion from Director Roper. Is there a second? Thank you, Chair, Director Harrington, for your second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. We have a unanimous vote on that as well. So thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your work. Go Wood Springs. All right. With that, we have the, we are moving to our last public comment period of five minutes.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrice. I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Would any member in the auditorium at this time wish to write any comment for up to five minutes on any housing-related item, to stand up or start coming forward? Not seen in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to write a public comment on any matter-related housing, giving up or to raise hand function? Not seen any hands. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much, Clerk Moss. Do we have any Board of Director announcements? No announcements. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
And a second, we have a, we have a motion from Director Willey and a second from Director Roper. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All right, it is unanimous, we are adjourning this meeting. Thank you. We will now be moving on to our Board of Commissioners meeting. We will take just a few minutes to set up, and we will move forward. Two minutes. We're taking a two-minute break. Could you put the clock up for two minutes, please? How far are you going, Jerry?
All right, welcome back, Commissioners. Chair Harrington, are you back with us?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
All right, I'll give you Madam Vice Chair the call to order.
I would like to call to order this meeting of the Board of Commissioners for September 2nd, open. And Clerk Moss, to you.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services, six in this regular session, September 2nd, 2025. Commissioner Phi?
Present.
Commissioner Snyder?
Here.
Vice Chair Thrice?
Here.
Chair Harrington?
Here.
Commissioner Willey should be back momentarily, so over to you, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to Clerk Moss for public communication.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrice. I did not see anyone sign up in the back of the room. Is there any member in the auditorium that wish to write a public comment on any county-related topic for up to two minutes? Just stand up, get my attention, come forward. Not seen in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to write a public comment on any county-related topic for up to two minutes? Do you like to raise hand function? Not seen any hands. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss, and I apologize for hitting my papers against the microphone at that point. At this time, I, I would like to review the consent agenda for this meeting. We have consent agenda items from, we have the minutes of our August 19th meeting. We have an issue from the Office of Community Development. We have an agenda item from the Sheriff's Office, an agenda item, we have, one, two, three? Four agenda items for land use and transportation. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Snyder and a second from Chair Harrington. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have a unanimous vote, five to zero, and we'll move on. At this point, we would like to, I would like to entertain- At this point, we would like to, I would like to entertain the opportunity to reappoint members to our Rural Roads Operations and Maintenance Advisory Group, that is ROMAC. Is there a motion to approve?
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Elizabeth Dudley and Slade Leahy to the Rural Roads Operation and Maintenance Advisory Committee for a term expiring September 30th, 2029.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner Phi. All those in favor, did you have a comment?
It just should be noted that we had this presentation in a work session, and so we're fully advised on the applicants for this position.
Thank you, Commissioner Willie, for that note. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have a unanimous vote, five to zero. Moving on to presentations, we would like to have a presentation regarding the National Association of Clean Water Agencies' Platinum and Silver Peak Performance Awards. Welcome.
Oh, thank you, Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Thrice, Clean Water Services Board of Directors. We're very excited to be here today. I'm Ryan Sandu. Usually I have my Field Operations Division Manager hat on when I speak with you. Today, I'm here in my role as the interim utility operations director. With me is Mr. Tom Stowe, also usually our Rock Creek Superintendent, but here today as the Rock Creek Superintendent, but also the water resource, interim water resources recovery department services manager. The National Association of Clean Water Agencies' Peak Performance Award Program annually recognizes NACAHA member facilities for excellence in water resource recovery and wastewater treatment as measured by compliance with our National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. This year, Clean Water Services received three platinum awards and one silver award, which is for the calendar year 2024. And Tom has a few additional details he'll provide today.
Thank you. Chair Harrington and Commissioners of the Board, thank you very much for allowing us to come to the meeting today. The NACAHA awards are truly a district-wide achievement, and it starts with our Board of Directors. Thank you very much for providing the funding and the structure for our operations. The level of excellence starts with our, well, continues with our executive leadership team. They also provide the authorization for the funding and for the policies that we follow. To be this successful, we need the continued support from every department and team within Clean Water Services. It takes a community to make this work well. The teams at the treatment plants carry out the O and M plans and make the day-to-day decisions to meet our permit limits. It takes thousands and thousands of decisions across each year for us to be successful, but it only takes one bad decision to put us in jeopardy. So, we do a lot of training to make sure that our staff knows what the right procedures are. At this point, I'd like to also introduce our plant superintendents, Dustin Hagaman from our Durham facility, Noah Harvey from Forest Grove in the Hillsborough facility, and also Paul Buckmaster, who's our superintendent for the pump stations. As Ryan said, our NACAHA awards are three platinums and one silver. The Forest Grove has the silver award. The Hillsborough has a platinum six, which is six consecutive years with zero permit issues. Durham with a platinum nine, and Rock Creek with a platinum 21. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do you, any comments before we take a picture?
Just wow and congratulations. That's impressive.
Tom, I tried to steal the three silver awards already. I tried to arm wrestle for you, but I'm happy to take a picture and congratulations. I didn't do the work, but I love awards, right?
Mr. Willie?
Nope, we're good.
I, I second the wows, and I'm not sure I'm going to try to steal your award, but at the same time, I want you to say congratulations, and let's come forward for a picture.
Thank you.
Yes, we need to reset.
We need to.
Keep going, keep going.
Are we all drunk?
Is this going to work?
Yes, I think it will work.
We'll make it work.
I take a couple on my camera and one on my phone. One, two, three.
Thank you.
We always say.
employees that make these awards possible. So, not just the people in the room, but the entire, entire organization. So, well done. And again, wow, that's the important word here.
We'll Photoshop you in there, Chair, so don't worry.
So, at this point, what I'd like to do is move on to public hearings. The first public hearing is on the transfer jurisdiction of portions of certain roads to the City of Banks as County Road 3361T/J. I believe we have a presentation.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair Thrice and members of the board. Today, I'm Stacy Shetler every day, but I'm here to present on the transfer jurisdiction of portions of the roads. So, it's a combination of roads within the City of Banks that they have requested for transfer jurisdiction via a city resolution. Those roads being Erst Road, Sixth Street, and Washington Avenue, they're shown on the screen here in the dashed red. So, as I said, the city has initiated this transfer, and these roads are all in the City of Banks proper, and they are not identified on our transportation system plan, long-term jurisdiction map. By transferring the road, the public's interests are still maintained by the city. Notifications were made per the statutes, and our surveyors' office has received no calls in support or against this transfer jurisdiction. We'll ask your board to hold a public meeting, and you may receive other additional input. After that input, we'd ask your board to conduct the public hearing and then approve the resolution and order transferring these portions of roads to the City of Banks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there questions before we move to a public hearing? No questions? I'd like to open public meeting. Clerk Moss, do we have anybody who would like to provide comment?
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrice. I did not see anyone sign up before the meeting. Is there any member of the auditorium wish to provide a public comment as a public hearing? As you've heard from staff, not seeing anyone come forward, raise their hand. Is there any member online via Zoom that wish to provide a public comment for this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, just give me a moment to utilize the raised hand function. Not seen any hands. Vice Chair Thrice.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public meeting, and at this time, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, this is, excuse me, I should have read this. This is a motion to transfer jurisdiction of portions of certain roads to the City of Banks as County Road 3361T/J.
That's the motion I moved, and?
I second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Pass, Chair Harrington, you, I saw your hand go up there as well. Thank you. It passes five to zero. Thank you very much, and thank you for the presentation. At this time, I'd like to go to our next public hearing, and this is on the third reading and second public hearing of ordinance number 906, repealing County Code Chapter 3, Sub 27, 3.27. This is our CPACE program. We will have a presentation. Thank you very much.
So, Madam Vice Chair, a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
Thank you very much. I do need a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, thank you. We, it passes unanimously. Over to you, Mr., our general counsel.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Ordinance number 906, an ordinance to repeal Chapter 3.27 of the Washington County Code establishing a commercial property assessed clean energy program.
Thank you. With our, well, let's move forward with our presentation.
Great. Good morning, Chair Harrington, Vice Chair Thrice, and Commissioners. I'm Stephen Roberts. I'm the Land Use and Transportation Department Director. We're here today to speak with you about ordinance number 906, and we're in the unusual place of actually asking the board to reject this ordinance. And Adrian will walk through a brief presentation, and we covered this during your work session last week as well. So, we know you're informed, but we also want to cover the key points of this in a public presentation for those who may be watching online. So, with that, I'm going to turn to Adrian Chalet. Adrian's our Economic Development Manager and is tasked with leading the CPACE program.
Thank you, Stephen. Good, good morning, Board. For the record, Adrian Chalet, Economic Development Manager, and today I will briefly walk us through what we have learned in the process of our program assessment for the CPACE program. As a reminder, CPACE is a real estate finance program that incentivizes clean energy. The primary goal is to promote resilience and sustainability of the built environment. And acting like an assessment, it is accessible to all types of for-profit and nonprofit commercial properties. You can see examples of eligible building improvements on the right. Oops, sorry. It's moving a little fast. Okay. A reminder of the past prior board action, I'll just focus on last week's session. We had a board discussion, a discussion with your board regarding our staff recommendation to reject the ordinance based on the findings of our program assessment recently completed. The program assessment and sunset provisions had been set forth as we piloted the CPACE program, and originally, the sunset date was December 31st, 2025, unless sooner continued by the Board of County Commissioners. We filed the ordinance at a time when we thought that the program should sunset prior to the sunset date, but since the filing of the ordinance that we are asking you to reject, the program assessment findings and additional engagement have provided us with a lot more information about how we could be successful in implementing this program, including an uptick in developer awareness and interest in the program coming through on a regular The two projects that we have completed to date are listed here. The first totaled 9.9 million and was a recapitalization of a 90-room hotel located in the City of Beaverton, as well as a self-storage building located in the City of Hillsborough, where the loan totaled 8.6 million. And we have several other projects in the pipeline that we are looking forward to supporting. The opportunities that we've identified through our engagement includes an increased awareness and outreach campaign, education to developers and property owners, local jurisdictions, capital providers, and provider associations, including groups like Energy Trust of Oregon. We also, since your work session, going off script here, have had some really great conversations with the Clackamas County, City of Salem, and Coal PAC about how we could conduct a regional outreach strategy around the CPACE program, as many of them are launching their own CPACE programs. So, today, our requested action is to conduct the public hearing and, following any testimony, reject ordinance nine, number 906, directing staff to file a new ordinance amending County Code to continue the CPACE program indefinitely with a required program assessment provided to the board by June 30th of each year. In addition, we would like your direction to develop program guidelines that would establish some clear target outcomes and objectives, and update program marketing materials. So, these are our next steps. Any questions?
Great. Thank you very much. Are there questions from anyone? We've had a very full discussion on this, and so at this time, what I'd like to do is open a public meeting.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium before the meeting. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to provide a public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard from staff, I'll give you just a moment to utilize the raised hand function. Not seen any hands. Vice Chair Thrice.
Thank you. With that, I'd like to close the public hearing and ask for a motion and a second to reject ordinance 906.
I move to reject ordinance 906.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Snyder and a second by Commissioner Phi. Clerk Moss, will you please provide a roll call vote?
Certainly, Vice Chair Thrice. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Phi?
Aye.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Chair Harrington?
Yes.
Vice Chair Thrice.
Yes. So, with that, it's a unanimous vote. Thank you for your work on this, and thank you for your openness to looking at all opportunities for our, the development in our communities.
Indeed. And Vice Chair, I'm sorry, but we also would like to ensure that the agenda, or that the motion includes direction to staff to file the new ordinance as well. That's not currently a part of our current work program, so we'd like to just be explicit that the board has given us that authorization to file a new ordinance.
Informally, but you're wanting a formal motion. I don't.
Correct.
I don't, I think that should be a separate motion, but that's.
Yes, let's, let's go ahead, let's go ahead with a formal motion to direct staff to develop a new ordinance, correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
Thank you. And is there a motion to, to that end?
I thought I heard Adrian mention that in the presentation. So, just so I'm clear, it's not what's listed in the next, in the motion?
It is. I just wanted to be clear, as, as it was stated, the motion was to reject ordinance 906, but not the additional motion to file the new ordinance.
Okay. So, you want a motion to file a new ordinance by?
Direct staff as listed on the slide.
Direct staff, okay. I make a motion to direct staff as listed on the slide.
To provide a new ordinance regarding CPACE.
Correct. Yep. And if, if you'd like, I can read the, the words.
Please do.
Yeah. So, the, the request is direct staff to file a new ordinance amending County Code to continue the CPACE program indefinitely with a required program assessment provided to the board by June 30th each year.
Thank you. I move that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, we have a unanimous vote, and thank you for the clarification.
Yes, thank you all.
Thank you for the motion. Thank you. Moving forward. All right. At this time, we are, we have another action item, and this is to approve the proposed nominees to Clean Water Insurance Company LLC Board of Directors. We have a presentation by our general counsel and Chief Compliance Officer, Caroline Lobdell. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Directors. It's nice to see you. I'm here today to ask for approval for Rick Shanley, who is our acting CEO slash general manager, and our risk manager, Lori Olson, to be nominated on the Clean Water Insurance Company Board, otherwise known as QUIC. The current makeup of the board is myself, Kathy Leader, Jacob Dvorak, and Roy Rogers. It previously included our CEO and our chief business operations officer, but those two persons have left, and we have the two vacancies on the QUIC side. I also want to, part of the presentation here, and this is not much of a presentation, but I do want to point to the April 8th resolution and order, CWS. in Order, CWS 25/5, that states in pertinent part that it is resolved and ordered that the district CEO is directed to obtain district board of directors' approval in advance of nominating representatives to serve on behalf of the managing member of the Board of Clean Water Insurance Company. So, technically, this could come directly from your CEO. This resolution and order was previously directed at your CEO, but that CEO at that time had not resigned, and we're in the circumstance now where we have an acting CEO. So, I'm actually advancing the acting CEO's recommendation, and I do support it, given the immediacy of some of the legal issues involved with QUIC.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Snyder?
Just very quickly, I understand the appointment of Mr. Shanley, given his current role. As we move forward and proceed with a hiring process presumably in the next six to nine months to name and onboard a new permanent CEO, would Mr. Shanley, under this plan, remain in this role of on the board regardless of that action, or would a change potentially be made, or what is the thinking around how that would play out?
My current thinking is that that would be deferred to, what you're telling me is that Rick would be returned to his job, and we would have another permanent CEO in place, and the question is what happens?
Yeah, and I understand that's not a fair, a fully fair presumption, but yes.
No problem. I think what the process would be is that I would defer to that CEO. We would need to make another recommend, the CEO would then come to you with the recommendation, and then it would be before you at that time.
Thank you, but he would remain until other action was taken?
Yes, absent.
Sorry.
A bunch of contingency, you know, lawyers always give depends, answers. Yeah, okay.
Are there any other questions? Thank you for that clarification. Do we have a motion to approve the proposed nominees to Clean Water Service Insurance Company LLC Board of Directors?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Commissioner, Director Phi, and a second from Commissioner, Director Willie. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. We have a unanimous vote, five to zero. Thank you very much for the presentation and for your work on this.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, we are moving to our last public communications section. This is our five-minute section, limited to five minutes per individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We do, Madam Vice Chair. We have Mr. Bob Terry.
Sitting in the middle, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Vice Chair Threes, and this is the Board of Commissioners. Thank you very much for this morning. My name is Bob Terry, county commissioner, former county commissioner of resident Washington County. I'm updating you on the Judicial Watch lawsuit, the state of Oregon. If you recall, we made a, the city of citizens here made a previous report to you about two weeks, or two weeks and maybe three weeks ago, where that lawsuit was. Dr. Mark Anderson, host of, I'm sorry, Dr. Mark Anderson, host of iSpy Radio Reports, that there have been multiple lawsuits to bring back some election integrity to Oregon. But for some reason, Oregon has fought every lawsuit in an effort to bring public that you can look at. Does the opposite building trust in our system? But just recently, there was a win for the election integrity. Some news outlets portrayed the Judicial Watch does not have standing in the lawsuit they brought against the state of Oregon, leading people to believe the lawsuit would not be continued. However, one of the parties in the lawsuit does have a standing, and the lawsuit will continue. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that it is continuing. In a June 6th Justice Department press release, Assistant Attorney General Harmel Dillon said accurate voters and registration rolls are critical to ensure that the elections in Oregon are conducted fairly, accurately, and without fraud. States have specific obligations under the first maintenance provision of the NVRA, and the Department of Justice will vigorously enforce this requirement. NVRA is National Voter Registration Act. In June, the US Department of Justice filed a statement in interest of the lawsuit, and an article of Maxine Bernstein, published on August 6th, 2025, by The Oregonian, states that the constitutional party of Oregon does have standing and authority to challenge Oregon's handling of the voter rolls in a pending lawsuit finding that the constitutional party had adequately raised a real harm, and that the state outdated voter registration lists have made it harder for the party to track whether its members' registration are active to maintain its standing as a minor political party able to nominate candidates. As a member of another party, I sympathize with the constitutional party. There are lots of folks on the voter rolls that no longer live where they are listed. When you are trying to reach out for people that has an impact, it's time it takes to find or find them. According to Eric Lee, the senior attorney for the Judicial Watch Election Integrity Team, the fact is that Oregon voter rolls, including Washington County, are known as some of the dirtiest in the country, and they are so proud of the fact that they will willingly to go to court to not clean them up. So, you just have to ask yourself, why do you suppose that this is? Judicial Watch argues that Oregon voter rolls contain large numbers of old inactive registrations, and then that 29 of the Oregon 36 counties' removed view registrations are required by federal election law. Judicial Watch asserts that Oregon and 35 of the counties have overall registration rates exceeding 100% that Oregon has the highest known inactive registration rate of any state in the nation. Washington County Elections Manager Dan Forrester stated the county elections division responsible for maintaining the voter registration records for voters residing in the county. Mr. Forrester also reported to this board on January 21/25 that elections work year-round to keep our voter rolls registered accurate as possible. Judicial Watch reports otherwise, and so has the citizens of this county. We request Washington County Elections adhere to federal requirements requiring voterless maintenance. Elections matter for many reasons. Just a couple of notes here. Our elected officials decide how the taxpayers, the voters' money is spent, and are responsible for protecting our rights. I might add to that, we, the citizens, have tens of thousands of illegal and not registered voters properly in this county. It exceeds our voter rolls by more than 10%. It's a serious, serious problem. We will be making a report on that sometime in the future. I thank you very much for your attention. If anybody has any questions, we also stand by to assist in the counting. We are, we have now are working on 60 people who we are training to do hand-counting voting and hand-counting registration and for our elections. So, we still offer that offer to help you at no cost. Thank you very much, and you all have a great day.
Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Right. Is there any other member in the auditorium that we should probably public comment on for any related county items? No one stand forward, come forward. Any member online via Zoom which should provide public comments on any county-related topic for up to five minutes, just utilize the raise hand function. Not seeing any hairs, hands, Vice Chair Threes.
Thank you very much, Clerk Moss. At this time, I'd like to read the board announcements. On Thursday, September 4th, we will have a roundtable starting at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 9th, we have a work session that begins at 9:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 16th, we have a work session that begins at 9:00 a.m. and a board meeting at 10:00 a.m. Tuesday, September 23rd, we have our afternoon work session that will start at 2:00 p.m. and a board meeting that evening at 6:30 p.m. On Thursday, October 2nd, we have a roundtable beginning at 9:00 a.m. And on Tuesday, October 7th, we have a work session that will begin at 9:00 a.m. and a board meeting at 10:00 a.m. Are there any other board announcements anyone would like to make? At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Phi, second from Commissioner Willie. All those in favor, please raise your hand. It's a unanimous vote. We are adjourned. Thank you.